Well, welcome. My name is Chris Jeffers. I'm the City Manager for City of Glendora. And first of all, to get us started, I'd like to introduce our Mayor with a welcome to you, Mayor Judy Nelson.
Well, thank you very much. It's just a pleasure to see such a good turnout today of people who want to learn about how to protect their property and in case of rain and mud flow that could be coming up. Just a few days and probably not even that long after our fire in January, our City Manager and City staff started working with LA County Flood Control, the Forest Service, the Fire Department, all the other entities who could actively help us in planning what to do in case of rain that would cause mud flow. We want to protect our property and we want to protect our residents. So I'm glad you came here today to learn about that, and I will turn the meeting back over to the City Manager.
Almost forgot. Our purpose today is we're going to, just finished up the introductions, we're going to have our distinguished panel here go over these things. We're going to update you on the assessments and findings of our foothills, what's happened. As the Mayor alluded to, it's only been eight months since the fire, so we haven't even been a year since January. So our partners over here have done, as they did right after the fire, walked the foothills. They have recently re-walked those foothills, and they're going to talk what they have observed and how the restoration is going and all that. We're also going to hear about updated debris modeling of flows that could happen based on different scenarios that we pay attention to. We're going to review the mitigation and preparedness ideas that we are doing as the public entities, but also as important, what we will ask you as private citizens to do in order to make us successful. We'll also talk about the communication and alert protocols, and as I said, we'll have a Q and A session at the end. First, I'd like to have John Thornton come up and sort of talk about that assessment process. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is John Thornton again with the San Gabriel River Ranger District on the Angeles Forest, and I was working on the burn area emergency assessment team. It was an interagency team that was made up of a number of different federal, state, and local entities. Then the job of a burn area emergency response is to go ahead and evaluate the change condition that a wildfire has on the watersheds. And the watersheds are basically the hill slopes that drain shed water into a particular area. And what we look at is what are the change conditions and watershed can, and changed watershed conditions that in this case present a problem to and a risk to either life and property. We're also worried about wildlife, worried about noxious weeds, worried about cultural resources and that. But in this case, it was a clear concern with the amount of life and property that were at the base of these different watersheds. And so things that we looked at immediately after the fire, we're looking at changes in ground cover, what we call effective ground cover. And as you all know, when you have a nice green long groin, you can put a lot of water on it and it doesn't erode away. But if you're putting in a brand-new lawn with bare soil, you've got to watch the amount of water on it because pretty soon the soil starts worsening away. And that's essentially what a wildfire can do is to denude the hillsides and leave them exposed and vulnerable to soil erosion. And so one is the change in protective water cover. Another one is looking at the amount of water repellency. And there is a natural phenomenon that when a fire burns and it volatilizes organic material, all the grasses and the shrubs and the forbs out there, is that a lot of that gets pushed off up into the atmosphere, but some of it is driven into the soil. And when it goes into the soil, those gases, they coat the soil particles with a water repellent layer. And that, just the name itself of water repellency, repels water. Another term is hydrophobic condition, so the water isn't able to go onto the soil as quick. And then, so we wanted to look at that. And another thing was the amount of, on the steep slope, the amount of soil that was vulnerable to wash down into those watersheds and that. And so what we found out in the last eight months is what is the change? And a lot of times in eight months, if you have a nice rainfall, if we had a nice winter where we had a lot of vegetative regrowth and we had enough abundant water to go ahead and help reduce that water repellency, because over time, that rainfall can actually leach out those water repellent layers down deep into the soil and then away, and then you can start removing the effects of that water repellency plus increasing the growth. But what we found out there is that, I think Dennis Staley may mention, we only had about maybe an inch and a quarter, an inch and a half of water on those slopes since February. So obviously, not enough to attenuate or to change the amount of water repellency, obviously not much at all to go ahead and help with the vegetative regrowth. A lot of us looked up on the hillsides, starting about a month after those storms, and went, wow, they look nice and green. What those were, were annual forbs or annual weeds that have long ago dried up and are gone and basically afford no protection. And a lot of vegetative regrowth that you get out of the sea in Oathas that can sprout back from the roots has barely been able to hold on its, in terms of the root sprouting, a lot of that has not been able to grow. And a lot of the seeds that were in the ground basically weren't able to germinate and continue growing. So we had very little increase in effective ground cover. These are pictured here. On the left is right after the fire, and is pretty much similar to the right. Is, you can just look at there. Again, we had 12% vegetative cover, protective ground cover, and we've only increased that by 4% on average for that fire. That is a very small increase in protective ground cover over the last eight months. The next slide will go ahead and show some of the vegetation that is trying to grow, chapparal growing up that is a root sprouter coming up. But if you look, and they're pretty much the same photo, but you only have just little patches of vegetation coming up in there with so little moisture during the drought season. And then you can look at a lot of the rest of the soil in there, it's just bare. Essentially, nothing is growing up there other than the flush of weeds that we had earlier in the year. The next picture shows on the left about the same area of the soil where it's fairly smooth and there hasn't been any what we call reeling. So in here, it's relatively smooth. Here you can see almost all these lines are like tiger paws where the rainstorm that was in end of February and 1st of March caused an erosion pattern that now makes it more efficient for water to come off. So in the case of if we have rain on this, it would take a while to build these reels. Well, now those reels are built, and so it's even going to take less rainfall to go ahead and to bring it on down into the community. So that's not a good thing there. The next slide is showing an example of the water repellency immediately after the fire. This bead of water will stay on the ground. It'll evaporate before it will sink in because of those kind of waxy coating of the soil particles. And this again is different because the ash has blown and washed away, but this bead of water here lasted for 30 minutes, and it's just staying right on top of the soil. A lot of times, that water repellent layer will start moving down into the soil as it is leached if you have enough rainfall over time. In this case, we haven't had enough rainfall to do, essentially do anything with water repellency. We were at about an average of 67% of water repellency, and now it's 59%. That's not much of an improvement, which means the watersheds are still quite vulnerable. The next slide, we'll go ahead and show, it's a little bit difficult here, but this is an example. It's actually a vertical shot where this is the ash before, and we sprinkled onto it like a blue dye. And this is, this right in through here is a vertical shelf of soil where we've excavated to see where did that, when we sprinkled on the blue dye water, where did the water come out into the soil versus how much just ran off over the slope? And if you'll see the next ones, it'll show the little places where water was actually able to come out, just these three spots here, meaning all the water went off the slope instead of into the soil. And so that's an example of what water repellency can do. It'll run over the surface of the slope before it's able to go ahead and infiltrate into the ground. And the next is a figure that displays that where if you have the precipitation coming in, then you look at these little breaks in here where you may have a break in the water repellent later, and the water's able to go ahead and infiltrate into the surface soil. And where it can't, it comes off in runoff. And that runoff is what then has the ability to cause floods, to cause debris flows that other speakers will talk about. And the next slide is showing what typically would happen in terms of over time watershed recovery in years from right after the storm out, let's say eight years. And then this is the disturbance amount. So how much effect did the fire have on the watershed? And the Colby Fire had a very dramatic change in watershed condition. And what we look at is over time, you're going to look at the wildfire effects lessening and the watershed stability and recovery increasing. And that's just, and then on this side of the curve, you're more vulnerable to erosion, floods, and debris flows affect to life and property until at some point in time, the watershed has recovered and the effects of the fire have gone away. And what we found out is these last eight months is that there's been very little recovery in that watershed, largely due to the fact that we haven't had any rainfall, maybe an inch and a quarter over the time to help with the vegetative regrowth and to help break down that water repellent layer. So we're actually still quite vulnerable.
Our next speaker is Dennis Staley of the U.S. Geological Survey.
Thanks, Chris, and thanks, John, for giving a nice introduction of the hydrological changes that occur in response to wildfire. That makes my job a bit easier. As Chris said, I'm a research geologist at the USGS in the landslide hazards program. I'm based in Golden, Colorado, but I've worked all around the western United States in burn areas studying post-fire debris flows. So I thought it would be good just to give an overview of what a post-fire debris flow is so that you guys are aware of that going into the winter. We all pretty much have an idea of what floods look like. Debris flows are like floods, but they're even more dangerous. They move, they travel faster, they can entrain much bigger particles, big boulders, car-sized boulders can be moving downstream channels. So they move faster, they have greater momentum, and they can be much more destructive than your, than your kind of garden variety flash flood, which is still an incredibly dangerous event. So having an idea of what these things are and how they initiate is probably a good idea. So what are these post-fire debris flows? Here's an example. This is in the Big Tahunga Canyon, just down the road here. This was burned in the station fire back in 2009, 2010. And it's a, it's a nice kind of textbook example of what a post-fire debris flow looks like. So these things happen during high-intensity bursts of rainfall. It doesn't necessarily matter how much it has rained during the storm or before the storm, how seasonal rainfall has occurred. We've seen, we've seen post-fire debris flows initiate in response to high-intensity rainfall after only 15 minutes of rain at the Harvard Fire down in the Verdugo Hills. We've seen them after three days of rain in the station fire just down the road here, just down 210. So the antecedent moisture really doesn't matter. It's these really high-intensity bursts of rainfall that matter. So those are things that people need to be aware of. If the Weather Service is predicting these bursts are coming through, be concerned at that point. It's a different process than what a lot of people are familiar with in terms of landslides and debris flows. So if you look closely, you don't really see any kind of evidence of a landslide at the head. There's no distinct scarp, no distinct failure. So it's unclear where all of this material that ends up going down the channel comes from. And our studies have revealed that, as John stated, the infiltration rates decrease in response to wildfire. The ground can't, the ground can't absorb water as rapidly. And so you get these high-intensity bursts of rainfall on the hill slopes. That rainfall generates into runoff, it can't be soaked in, so it moves downstream channel and it progressively erodes material. And it bulks and bulks and bulks in the channel until finally, there's this big massive rocks and trees and mud flowing down the channel at very high velocities. So that's what a post-fire debris flow is. It's not this landslide at the head. It's this sort of entrainment and channelized process. And so if you go after the fact and you take a look, you might, you're going to see evidence of both flooding and debris flows. They go hand in hand together. So I don't want to diminish the importance of flooding and the hazards associated with flooding here, but I want to focus mainly on debris flows simply because of their destructive capability. Next slide, please. So again, this is in the station fire just down the road, Dunsmore Canyon in the Glendale area. I believe this is a state park. So this is, this is a, this was a very nice riparian area right before the 2009 station fire. And even after the fire, it was actually, the riparian vegetation resisted the fire, but it was actually fairly nice. A debris flow came down in January of 2010 and carved out this, this big channel. There is a geologist in here for scale. They're kind of hard to see, they're right in there somewhere. So anyway, this is, this is a few meters deep and several meters wide channel that's been eroded. And then this, so this was after the first event. After the second event, you'd think that maybe there wasn't so much material up in the drainage basins, maybe the flow wouldn't be so big. That wasn't the case. This is after the 5th of February rainstorm, and you can see the channel has widened significantly, it's deepened significantly, and it's removed a lot of this vegetation. So all of those trees are now in the Dunsmore Sediment Retention Basin at the bottom. So these things happen all throughout, can happen all throughout the season in response to high-intensity rainfall. Next slide, please. So what aren't post-fire debris flows? Though I think that's, that's an important thing to ask ourselves too. Some of you may be familiar with what happened up in Oso, Washington this past spring where this massive section of hillside just collapsed. So I believe this is maybe a quarter mile across and maybe a mile long, and unfortunately, there was a village town situated right here, and 43 people were killed. This isn't the type of processy that we, processy that we would expect to occur in the mountain front here. We can't rule out the possibility of something like this happening. These things do happen, they happen fairly infrequently. We're much more concerned with post-fire debris flows because they can happen in response to rainstorms that are a garden of variety of rainstorms, something you could expect pretty much every year. So we need to be, we need to be cognizant that we live in the mountains and landslides in general can be a hazard, but this isn't the type of thing you're going to see. You're not going to see this massive chunk of hillside most likely break off into your, into your neighborhood. You're going to see those channelized processes that erode material, flow down channels, and then exit out onto the flat spots below the, below the base of the mountain. Next slide, please. So I've done a bit of work going up into the burn area to take a look at what is the hazard for this coming season. One of the things we look at is how much material is available for transport. Are all the channels eroded down to bedrock? Is there stuff that can be picked up and moved? And yes, there is plenty of material that can be picked up and moved. This is just looking up, this is one of the hooks. I forget which hook basin this is. This is a check dam right up above it. So anyway, plenty of material stored right up above the check dam. This is looking up the channel. All of this material was brought into the channel during that small rainstorm that occurred at the end of February last year. So lots of stuff was moving around. Luckily, we didn't have enough rain to get it moved into the debris basins, and luckily, we've got Public Works with their debris basins to catch this stuff as it comes down. Next slide, please. So this is again looking up the basin. We want to look at vegetation recovery. John covered this pretty thoroughly in his talk. So you can see, I was going to put a pre and post picture, but they look the exact same. So there's hardly any vegetation on the hill slopes. Little bit of regrowth in the channels, but not, not enough certainly to be able to prevent channel erosion. Next slide, please. So if you are concerned about post-fire debris flows and you'd like more information, the USGS has a, we have a project that we work on these things. The website is here. If you just type "USGS and debris flows," it'll probably come up when the first hit on Google. We have a couple products that we produce. First, we have these debris flow hazard estimates. This is a relatively new, relatively new thing for us. The Colby Fire was actually the very first one we did, where we have an interactive map online that you can go and you can zoom in and zoom out, and you can toggle different layers on and off. And those layers are the probability of debris flow, so how likely a debris flow is in response to a 10-year rainstorm. The estimated amount of material that could be coming down a channel up above a debris basin, so it doesn't factor in debris basins in catching that material. And then sort of this combined hazard ranking, that's a low to high scale of how hazardous a particular drainage basin or stream segment is. And all of those are viewable, and again, this is in response to a 10-year rainstorm. For those of you who may or may not be GIS savvy, you can download the geospatial data as well and take a look at all of the information you'd like. And then finally, we've done a lot of research in the San Gabriel Mountains that looks at the intensity of rainfall needed to initiate post-fire debris flows. And we've, we've worked quite closely with the Weather Service over the years. So we've developed a set of thresholds, which Mark is going to talk about, and we provide that guidance to the Weather Service, and then they know the rain that can, that can produce post-fire debris flows. And then finally, I have several rain gauges that I've put in that are research grade. You can't download the data or see the data in real time, but I can go and reconstruct the event afterwards. But today, I actually installed a rain gauge up, just up above Rainbow Drive here, and that data is telemetered, and we're going to be trying to stream that to the, to the Weather Service so they can have a real-time idea of what's happening in the burn area. And with that, I believe I'm done. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Dave Davies, our Director of Public Works.
This is an actual event that happened in Lockanyata in Flintbridge in 2010, and we show this to you because of the danger of the flow. Assuming an eight-inch curb here, it's coming up over the curb, so it's at least eight inches deep. And trying to enter it or cross it would be not only dangerous, but potentially fatal. And the San Bernardino event that happened in August, there was an individual that tried to drive through this, he ended up losing his life. It's that intense, so, and it'll be talked about a little later because these happen so fast in the, in the presentation, but we ask you to heed the advice of our Police and Fire Department for the evacuations because it happens so quickly. Once it starts, you won't be able to leave because you can't cross this type of a flow. If you look down, is this thing, it's turned up, you see the K-rail that's been turned up by the flow. Cars become projectiles, and it's just extremely dangerous. And what happens after the mud flow? It turns as hard as concrete. And the hard part for us is, for example, just with the flows we had earlier this year, it took over a month for us to actually finish the cleanup, mostly because we had to move the debris and dirt twice. We can't dispose of it as wet as it is while we're trying to clear the streets, so we have to take it somewhere and let it dry out. And then once it's dried out, we have to take soil samples and then finally take it to a place where we can dispose of it. So on private property, here's just an example that your house is not a safe place to be. So please heed the evacuation mandates, and when we get to the cleanup phase, try to be patient because it's very difficult to clean up this debris. This is an example of what happened in 1969. Again, you can see the debris and mud entering the house and around the areas. It's an overwhelming amount of mud and debris, and the cleanup is a huge effort on everyone's part. We will do our best to continue our efforts to take everything out of the public way. If you have mud and debris on your property and you get it to the street, we will dispose of it for you. This is an example of some of the K-rail we've put in. To date, we've installed over 8,500 feet of K-rail and over 700 feet of pipe and timber walls to channelize the flows, to take them down the streets so they can get to an area where they can finally settle. And you can see on the lower left-hand corner, the K-rail's doing what it's supposed to do. It's keeping the water and debris off of private property. Same to the right, you can see the mud on the left and the clear area on the right. And that's the, that's the purpose. We try to channelize this and, and get it to a spot where it can finally disperse. Recently, Los Angeles County Public Works found another area after our initial installation. We added an extra 500 feet up on North Vista Bonita and added a little more on Palm. And in discussions with them today, there may be a couple other areas we may be adding some more K-rail. So, but that's the purpose, is to channelize it and keep it off of private property, but we need your help. You're responsible to fill in your driveways. If you don't fill in your driveways, it may not work. So we have plenty of examples here of how to do that. It's very easy, and Pat Wood from Los Angeles County Public Works will be talking about that a little more in her presentation. But we encourage you to take the handouts. We have contact information there, so any way we can help you, we're certainly more than willing to respond. Lastly, sandbags. In March of this year, we filled over 30,000 sandbags. It was, and they were mostly taken out and distributed. We will have them available at our street yard on Lorraine, off of Lorraine, and we probably will be putting some out in the field, but the best thing to do is to come and get them. We will have them pre-made, as many as we can. We'll also have sand and bags. The Fire Department will have empty bags, and you're warned welcome to come and get the sand and/or bags if we have them available.
Pat Wood, representing the LA County Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Well, I'm here to go over debris mitigation measures. Now, there is a mention that there was a severe debris event that occurred in 1969, and there is a lot of, a lot of work's been done in regards to debris control in your area since 1969. We've installed more debris basins, we've installed stream stabilizers, and stormed drains with catch basins. Now, here is a map that shows the major drainages that are in the Colby Fire area. The spots in blue there that you see, those are the debris basins that are in the city of Glendora. There are five debris basins that are in the city of Glendora. Engelwild and Harrow, they were built in the late 50s, early 1960s. And the other ones, Hook East, Hook West, and Westridge, they were built in the early 1970s in the wake of the 1969 mud flow event. Those last three debris basins were also enlarged about 15 years ago. Next we have here is an exhibit that was shown to residents when we had an open house back in March for city residents at our Harrow East debris basin. What it shows is that in addition to the debris, of course, that gets caught in the debris basins, is that the major storm outlet for a debris basin is the spillway that goes over the, that goes over the debris dam. So if one sees water going over the spillway, it's not time to panic. It's what the debris basin is, it's working the way it's supposed to. The tower that you see there is actually used to de-water the sediment that accumulates in the debris basin. Next, that we have on here is another exhibit that we had at the open house, and this is for the crib dam stream stabilizers. Those are the structures that look like concrete Lincoln Logs that you see dotting the foothills. And we showed, we showed this exhibit just to let people know the differences between a debris basin and a stream stabilizer. They have two very different functions. A debris basin catches debris, what the crib dams do here is that they, they're basically form like a series of stair steps in very steep canyons to try to slow down the flows, to try to lessen the erosion power of those flows going down the canyons. So as a result, the soil that's behind the crib dams there is meant to stay behind the crib dams to form that stair step. And in fact, if we cleaned out behind it, it would basically take away some of the foundation of that crib dam to where it would actually overtop if flows actually hit behind and that soil wasn't there to keep the flows going on. Now, what we've done in the wake of the fire and in the wake of the storms that have occurred is that we've performed debris basin cleanouts in your area. So right after, what we show here is Engelwild debris basin, by the way. So what this shows, the cleanout that occurred after the February/March storm. So you see what occurred before the cleanout, during the cleanout, and after the cleanout. So right after the fire, we removed about 18,000 cubic yards of sediment. After the storm, we removed over 64,000 cubic yards of sediment. The debris was taken to disposal sites in the Irwindale area, although what we are doing is we just finished a sediment removal from the local sediment placement site, that's Dalton Sediment Placement Site further to the east of here. And that's the crate room locally for the debris that's going to be coming into the debris basins for upcoming storms, and also to create a little, to create some room for debris off the city streets as well. The thing about the, for the cleanouts is that, you know, be prepared that there's going to be a lot of truck traffic and multiple cleanouts during the next several years of recovery of the burned watershed and of several cleanouts of Dalton Sediment Placement Site for that very purpose as well, to try to recreate that storage area. well, to try to recreate that storage area. But debris basin and the stream stabilizers alone can't mitigate all the impacts of debris that come after a fire. There are additional treatments that are put in. So, we're going to be covering treatments on public property, treatments that are on private property, and then the don'ts and the do's when it comes to doing those private treatments. The main thing that we need to remember in all of these things is that Mother Nature is very unpredictable. So, we try to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. So, on to the public treatments. Mr. Davies here talked a great deal about the K-rails. And again, the purpose of the K-rails is to keep the flows in the street, because they do have a tendency to act as channels during storm. So, the purpose is to keep the flows in the street and away from the homes that are along those streets. For the debris basins, we continue to monitor and clean out as needed. Now, for the private treatments. There are measures that homeowners can take. And a lot of these measures were prescribed to many homeowners in the Glendora area in the wake of the Colby Fire. We visited over 200 properties in the city of Glendora alone, in the months of February and March of this year. So, a lot of the treatments are, they're seen on the advice forums, and also on the homeowner's guide, which are all on the tables over there, by the displays over there. So, the thing to keep in mind about the measures that are put into the advice, is that they are interim measures only. They're temporary. For more permanent measures, private property owners will need to hire their own professionals. Now, there are several don'ts in regards to implementing measures on the property. You don't want to block flows. You don't want to install measures on other people's property without those other people's permission. You also don't want to direct flows away from you, but over to your neighbor. They really hate that. As Mr. Davies referred to in a couple of slides back, is those flows, when they come down the streets, they are very fast, and they're very deep, and they can just literally, they can literally wipe you off your feet. So, you do not want to try to cross those flows. You also do not want to park your cars into those flow paths. They can, they will move, and they can crash in and literally become projectiles. Okay, I've gone over a lot of don'ts, but there's do's as well. And the first do is, for those of you who got advice, but you have questions about the advice that you received, or tweaks to it, you know, do call to get those kinds of tweaks if you want to. If you're new to the neighborhood, and you don't know whether or not you need advice, you just moved in, do give a call. For those who were offered advice, but they, you know, but, "I'll decide not to do it, but thank you very much." If you decide that you really do want to have the advice, do feel free to call us, and we'll come out and visit you. Again, the city has packets there that has the contact name and information for you to go to. For permanent measures, you do want to consult a licensed professional. You do want to work with your neighbors. And especially, you want to pay attention to the forecast, and be vigilant about paying attention to the weather forecasts. And do follow the instructions of your city officials. They're really doing everything they can to protect your lives and property. You also want to have, and you also would be a good do, is having an emergency plan for your family. For those who are wanting to do restorative landscaping, and you're in the fire area, do keep in mind, you may very well need a city permit to do that. So, do contact the city's planning department, and see, because there might be some requirements that you may have to follow on that. Now, several forms of measures. Here we have a pipe and timber structure. So, you want to use good, substantial materials, good thick gauge pipe, good thick wood. All of these materials, they are available at hardware stores. And details on how to build these things, they are part of the packets that the city has provided on the side tables over here. Also, when you're working on any of these, where you're going to be putting something into the ground, and you're near a driveway approach, you would want to call 811, which is the underground alert, to make sure that you're not hitting any water lines or gas lines. And if you're still kind of worried about that, do call the city's Public Works Department. Another thing also is, we got treatments here for windows, and for the windows and doors. This comes right out of our homeowner's guide. What's not shown here are sandbags, which were mentioned before. Those sandbags, just so you know, that they're for more shallower flows. The advice that county engineers have given residents in the area, they do specify the number of sandbags needed. And the advice packages that we give out, they do have instructions on how to fill and place them. And the city has packets over here that also have those instructions. In the absence of getting advice from County of Los Angeles, folks can check with erosion control professionals on their own, especially if they're going to be using more than 25 Now, next, here we have an example of how our driveway is closed off. And again, it's the, like, pipe and timber, very substantial materials that you'd want to use on there. The debris flows can pack quite a wallop. Now, what they've done on here is that they drilled holes into the driveway, and I'm sure that they called underground alert before doing so. And what they did is that they took a slightly larger diameter pipe, and put that in, and then put concrete around it to act as a sleeve. So, that way, all they had to do is just put their pipes in, and just attach the wood onto the pipes. And it's very, you know, relatively simple to do on there. And then, they take them out, and then what you'd want to do with those sleeves on there is that you'd want to put a cap on them, so that you don't get dirt and debris in them, and they get so full that you can't put the pipes back in the next time you want to use Now, the next, here is a detail on how to deal with closing driveways in connection with the K-rails. Again, this was something that Mr. Davies had mentioned earlier. It is really, it's the responsibility of every property owner to take care of their driveways. And in the neighborhoods where you do have these network of K-rails, it is essential that every property owner do his or her part to close off the driveway, so that way, you do not have flows sneaking behind the K-rails, and then damaging a whole bunch of properties because it snuck behind through an open driveway. And I know that folks have asked in the past about the cost of these driveway treatments. The cost is well worth it, especially when you consider the value of the structure that you're protecting, your home. So, in conclusion, what you want to do on measures, is that the point of the measures is to deflect around a structure without impacting neighbors. Due to the time of the year that we're at, if these measures have not been implemented on your properties, do implement them ASAP, or as soon as possible. The advice recommendations that the county gives, they are short-term only. You will need to go to a professional for long-term advice, or long-term measures, excuse me. And you do want to pay attention to the weather forecasts, and the instructions of your city officials. Thank you very much.
Our next one is probably the most important speaker in my mind, is the Weather Service, Mark Jackson.
Thank you, Chris, and welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming out this afternoon, and thanks to the city for inviting NOAA and the National Weather Service along. And wanted to talk about a few things for my time. And one is our winter outlook. And if you recall, the media, especially back in the spring, back in April and even May, there was talk of a possible El Nino this coming winter, on the scale of 1997/1998. The climate scientists and experts, as they were monitoring ocean temperatures in the Central Pacific, were seeing some very warm waters that were on scale with 1997/1998. Unfortunately, I guess, if you want a lot of rain, things have calmed down. And now, we're looking at, there is an El Nino watch. If you go to the NOAA Climate Prediction Center website, you can find out more information on this. But there is an El Nino watch for this winter, and right now, the chances of an El Nino are at 60% to 65%. And there's a website on there, if you want more information on El Nino. Now, even though it is fair to say that the chances of above-normal rainfall are greater with an El Nino year generally than a La Nino year, unfortunately, it's difficult to really predict what kind of rainfall intensities we may get with any year. We could have very intense rainfall outside of an El Nino year. And, you know, we saw down the road here, near Mount Baldy, that we had rainfall, we had rainfall down there of about over four inches in an hour. And so, again, these can occur at any time. If the trends continue of what we're seeing right now, the chances are we will have a weak El Nino. Now, unfortunately, if we go back and historically look at how much rainfall has been received in Southern California with these events, just taking downtown Los Angeles as an example, they received anywhere from three and a half inches to over 26 inches of rainfall in a year. And in fact, when we look at each year in which there has been a weak El Nino, and look at how much rainfall has occurred, about a third of the time, it's below normal. About a third of the time, it's normal, and about a third of the time, it's above normal. Okay? So, if any of you have a dartboard at home, you can put above normal, below normal, or normal in three different areas, throw a dart, and that's your prediction. So, it is, it's unfortunate, it's a very difficult science predicting seasonal rainfall. We continue to monitor, and as we get, of course, as we get a little bit closer to the season, we'll have a little better idea. But it's imperative to remember that flooding can occur at any time, any season, and will typically occur with back-to-back strong storms. And again, El Nino, a neutral condition or La Nino, it can occur on any season. Next slide. So, just to kind of summarize, for those of you that were at the community meetings, I want to say last year, but it was just still this year. We work with very closely, as Dennis said, with the USGS. Jamie Labor is in here, in the back. He's our senior service hydrologist. He works side-by-side with Dennis, and works very closely with analyzing these burn areas. He was on the Burn Area Emergency Response Team, that John mentioned earlier. And what they do is, they provide us rainfall rate thresholds that we can use to help determine whether there is a chance or a likelihood of a debris flow within a recent burn area. Now, unfortunately, we have two things going against us this year. Number one, this burn occurred in January, which is unusual, since we usually get most of our fires in the fall. And the advantage of having those fires in the fall is that now, you've captured most of the winter rainy season as an opportunity for grow back, for more vegetation. Unfortunately, it occurred in January, and as a double whammy, we've had extremely dry conditions. And we are in an exceptional drought through most of California. Over half of the state of California is considered in exceptional drought conditions. So, as a result, and you heard with the speakers earlier, we've had very little, if no, vegetative growth back. And so, we are now looking at the same kind of rainfall rate thresholds that we were using back in February and March. And those rainfall rate thresholds could be adjusted as we go through the winter. Dennis mentioned that there are rain gauges up within the burn area. After each event, there will be a new evaluation of the conditions within the burn area. And those could be adjusted up to the second-year thresholds, which, what typically happens is, the second-year thresholds, it requires more rain to produce a debris flow. It can, debris flow can still occur. We've seen plenty of debris flows occur beyond the first year of a burn area. But, so that evaluation will occur through the season. These could be adjusted. So, just to kind of go over again, and I showed a slide, this slide last year, or, here I go, last year, back in January. And one of the most important things to keep in mind is to be alert and be informed. There's quite a few ways today, in electronic age, of being informed through the National Weather Service. Our primary form of disseminating warnings is with the NOAA Weather Radio. You can buy them at Radio Shack, Best Buy, Walmart. They will give you a tone alert if there's a warning within your area. We also now are very active in Twitter. And what we will do is, we have a desk that's dedicated to social media. They will be sending out tweets on any sort of news that we are hearing, or information that we want to pass along. We might retweet tweets from other agencies, such as from the city of Glendora. We also have a Facebook page. Facebook page is good for, as we go, as we get closer to a storm, we may provide some outlook information. We may post some information on storm safety and preparedness. And then, of course, our website, which, of course, will display a lot of our warnings. You can view radar data on that website. Now, to go over the kind of the progression of, as we approach the possibility of an event, a rainfall event. And even before a flash flood watch is issued, which is typically issued anywhere from 12 to 48 hours prior to when we think the rain will start, we are in constant contact with city officials. Go back to last February and March, we contacted the city of Glendora. The previous Friday, if you recall, we got that rain on, it was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we contacted the city of Glendora the previous Friday, a week before. We didn't know the exact details of what might happen, but we knew that models were predicting a possible heavy rain event. So, there's that heads-up information, that we try to get people alert, and start to take some sort of action to get thinking. So, a flash flood watch only means that there's, we believe there's a greater than 50% chance that we might experience some flash flooding within that timeframe. So, as the watch is out, if you can imagine, we'll issue a watch for a certain period of time. Within that watch, we may issue a flood advisory. Technically speaking, a flood advisory is only considered nuisance conditions, not life-threatening, but it is something that you should be aware of. It's more than the norm. And then, so finally, we would issue a flash flood warning. And a flash flood warning means that either flash flooding, which is considered life-threatening or property-threatening, is either imminent or is occurring. Now, it's very important within, below a burn area, and it's important to remember to follow the instructions from the city. As you look at, and you'll see with the upcoming presentations on some of those coded alert levels, if you are in your residence, and the flooding is occurring, the flash flooding is occurring, or you may hear the roar of the water above you, do not leave. You're in more danger, as you saw in the video earlier, you're in more danger of actually being out in the street. And if possible, stay within your residence, within an interior part of the home, or if you have a second floor up in the second story. But again, the best-case scenario is to listen to the instructions from the cities, and to heed that advice for evacuations. Okay? So, just go back real quickly here, to look at what happened last February and March. So, if you recall, again, it was on a later, it was kind of a later part of the week. We issued a flash flood watch on that Thursday, February 27th, for possible heavy rainfall upcoming for that Friday through Saturday. Los Angeles County Department of Public Works then issued a Phase II mud flow forecast. So, that's kind of considered their mid-level phase alert, based on that flash flood, or flash flood watch. As that event unfolded then, and during the event, we did issue flash flood warnings. And we issued, we either issued flash flood warnings based on the fact that we were seeing radar estimated precipitation rates upstream, or near the burn area, on the burn area, that exceeded, that exceeded those USGS thresholds. Or, we had rain gauges, which were around the area, that had rainfall rates that were either close to, or we saw that were above. Or, again, if we believed that, say, there was that very strong possibility, we'd get those kind of rainfall rates. As it turns out, we had rainfall rates that were right around that one-hour USGS threshold, very close to the burn area. The 30-minute and one-hour rainfall rates turns out to be about a one- to three-year recurrence. So, in other words, almost a garden variety storm, okay? Something you might get every year, every three years. It's important to know that, as we were watching this system, there was heavier rain outside of this burn area. There was heavier rain east of here, west of here, either side. And that's kind of the nature of the game. Flash flooding, flash flood forecasting and warnings, we don't have 100% accuracy. It's very difficult to do that. It's just a state of the science. We do the best we can, and unfortunately, there are times that you will be under a flash flood warning, and you won't get flash flooding where you live. And that's just the nature of the science. And that's why it's important not to take, make decisions, put matters into your own hand, and listen to the officials to protect yourself and your property. After the event, the USGS did an extensive survey of the area, and as you heard earlier, we did see some, we saw erosion and some reeling, as was pointed out. The one thing that I wanted to say was that, we've, you know, in working with these cities in situations like this, it really was, and this, you know, we, with the city, they had incredible preparation right after the fire. We had meetings here that Chris organized. And as that event unfolded, we had daily conference calls. The incident command, I would say, it worked perfectly. Practically, it was a model, really, for coordination. We had one of our meteorologists, Eric Boulder- We had one of our meteorologists, Eric Boulder, warning coordination meteorologist, on those conference calls, he would provide an update of the situation. So I really believe that that was about as well as you could do in preparation and response with that event. One other thing I wanted to bring up is that if anybody is interested in being a storm spotter, I brought this up last year, there I go again, last January, whatever that was, if anybody's interested in being a storm spotter, come see me afterwards, I did have a couple of people after the meeting, the last meeting, come up, and it's very helpful for us. You're, storm spotters are the eyes to what's going on out there, it can be anything they may observe, and they may, anything from very severe conditions to the roadways are wet. I mean, this is something, it's practically an irreplaceable and valuable piece of information that we can get from storm spotters. We give you an 800 number, we give you a phone number that you call us to tell us what's going on. All we ask is that we get your phone number so we can call you up and say, hey, what's going on there, we see some rain. It's incredibly important to what we do. That's it. Thank you.
We have a new face this year from the Fire Department, Acting Assistant Chief Jim Enriquez.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, or good afternoon, I'm Jim Enriquez, I'm the Acting Assistant Chief in this area, and it's kind of ironic that we're speaking about potential storms when it's almost 100 degrees outside and we're staffing up for our wind event. And that said, it's, you know, we're in the business of responding when you call 911, whether it's police or fire need, and that's what we do. And it's certainly great if we can know in advance what to anticipate, and that's what we're doing here today, is planning in advance with the potential threats. And all these various threats that come with living within the Interface Forest Services, you know, here in Glendora, it's a beautiful community, but nevertheless, we do have that wildland threat, and as a consequence of the Colby Fire, subsequently, now we have the mud threat. As we're doing today, LA County Fire, we're up-staffing, we do have our, because of the wind event, our super scoopers ready, our heli-tankers ready, and in that anticipated threat. Likewise, as we did for the preparation of the storm event, we did collaborate with all the various responders, and as was indicated, I think it worked great. I do want to credit Mr. Jeffers, he brought outstanding leadership as we activated the EOC here, and he was our EOC manager for us. And we collaborated with various responders in a unified command system, without getting into the, all the details of what a unified command system is, but in generally, we work together in collaboration identifying the threats, and the biggest threat as was identified is that debris flow or displacement of dirt. Imagine taking all that dirt that's on the hillside, or the, then all of a sudden, it's displaced and now it's down here. Was up there, now it's down here. I've been recently doing some cement work at my house, and I bought a 60-pound bag of cement, and I was kind of looking at the bag flipping around, and all those 60 pounds, I remember looking at it and said, when you're done, it's going to be one cubic foot of space. And it was pretty heavy, and I started thinking, imagine that debris flow that we saw that was, that was demonstrated here in the video in La Canata. What we're really concerned about as we were patrolling during the debris, of the potential debris flow up in your neighborhoods, is that threat, is that potential threat, that rescue and the threat of lives if someone attempted to cross that, because there's no way that we is, we can compete with that energy coming at us, especially the boulders, the waters, that is extremely dangerous and very life-threatening. So what we do during the activation of EOC, we worked with our various, we worked, we worked in advance of identifying the threat to degree, at what period of rainfalls, and we up-staff. We collaborated with the various agencies, having our city manager, Mr. Jeffers as our incident manager, and then likewise, we continue as develop that intelligence. Both PD and the local Fire Department are patrols, we were out there getting that intel every hour, and identifying what neighborhoods appear to be having some flows, getting that intel back, staffing up, and working with the various departments to ensure that, ensure that roads are being clear. Our objective as we come under the unified command system, it ultimately is a common goal, and that's preserve life, your life. Likewise, our firefighters' lives, our police officers' lives, people that are in a direct harms threat. I want to give Public Works a lot of credit, because I thought we were kind of nuts sometimes, they were out there in the debris brace, and while the rain's coming out, trying to keep those drains cleared, in their boats, a small boat out there, and they did a very effective work, and that is very dangerous. Likewise, as if something did go wrong, we did have that in mind, that that might be a potential response for us. In the preparation of the debris flow, LA County, we did have up-staffed, we had our task force, our Urban Search and Rescue Task Force members, we also had our, another task force with some of our skip loaders involved in assessing, assessing the potential, but more importantly, if we had to get up in your neighborhoods. There was several neighbors that were identified that we asked to voluntarily to relocate momentarily, or at least for that, until the threat passed. And the biggest reason why we do that is that it is also dangerous. Imagine if we did have a substantial release of dirt. We, as incident commanders and the operations and the persons in charge of ensuring the welfare and safety of yourself, but likewise, our firefighters, we have to make the decision, do we put our firefighters in a potential life-threatening situation to remove you from your home? We don't want to do that, we don't want to put them in a direct threat, especially in this circumstance where it's somewhat unfamiliar with us, we're very familiar with fighting fires and responding to different emergencies. But the debris is something that we truly have to systematically look at it, and look at the risk versus gain and the potential threat to our firefighters. Get the appropriate equipment and execute that decision of putting our firefighters in harm's way. So that's why we ask, when we identify to, if we, depending on the predicted rainfall, if we do ask to relocate momentarily for the day or night, that's mostly for your safety, but likewise for a firefighter's safety. If we know that there's, that we, in those homes that we assessed during the debris flow when the EOC was activated, we had all the addresses of home personnel who chose to remain in their house, likewise, the ones who left. The ones that remained at home, there's definitely a risk involved, and the risk is your life, likewise, our firefighter's lives that are going to be required to go up there and rescue if you call for 911. So we do ask that when we do identify, especially if we have a substantial rainfall, that maybe, it may be inconvenient for that period of time, however, you may just save your own life, you may save one of our firefighters' lives. So we do ask you to take that seriously, when we have our subject matter experts, and we take the matter of asking you to leave your home very seriously. Likewise, police officers inherit the responsibility of maintaining that security, and they do it, and they did it very well in this time. But we don't know of the anticipated rainfall, again, it was, appears to be a 33 chance, 33% chance of a heavy, medium, or a low rainfall this season. But likewise, what we're going to do again, exactly what we did in February, we're going to get together under unified command, under the leadership of Mr. Jeffers, and work collaboratively and work with our Forest Service partners, our police agency partners, our Weather Service personnel, and come as one common, one common team, and with this goal of preserving your life and your property. And one more thing I do want to just mention, we have a very active CERT program, and I'd like, Alicia, if you can speak on that behalf, real quick. And here in the community, we do not forget, we do live in earthquake environment, and that also poses a threat, we never know when that's going to happen, and having a community emergency response team, a local team, is certainly very beneficial for all of us.
We have a series of training coming to Glendora, February 10th through March 31st, it's on Tuesday nights, it's for eight weeks.
Thank you.
A man who needs no introduction, our Chief of Police.
Listen, before I start, Chief Enriquez brought with him LA County firefighters in the back of the room, take, turn around, take a look. I just want to remind you that in January, the firefighters of the LA County Fire Department saved Glendora, and they're heroes in my eyes, so let's give them a... They did an amazing job, they're the finest fire department in the United States, if not the world, so. So what have the experts told us today, the scientists, the engineers next to us, they tell us so far that little has changed in our hillsides since January, that the debris flows are very dangerous. In fact, one of the, Dennis, as a matter of fact, described a flash flood as a garden variety, and I don't think I've ever described a flash flood as garden variety, so what he's saying is, is that a short, a microburst of rain coming down in a short amount of time can do really bad things. What else did they tell us, that weather is hard to predict, but it is going to rain this winter. When it rains in Glendora, sometimes it comes down very, very hard and very, very fast. Mark had said that the debris flow threshold is about, in Glendora, about a half inch in an hour's time, yet two months ago, folks, two months ago, we're going to tell you that, what was it, four inches, in Mount Baldy, two months ago, four inches came down in an hour's time. If that storm had come over Glendora, very bad things would have happened, four inches in an hour's time in Glendora. One person lost their life just two short months ago. And then finally, a rainstorm last February, the end of February, was not unusual, again, garden variety, as Mark had described. Our engineers like to use the word garden variety a lot to describe their disasters, but I'd like to see what kind of gardens they have. Forecasting, not 100%. Every effort is going to be made to notify you residents when things are happening, when we are changing our color code from green to yellow to orange to red, get out. And we've improved that, in these months, we've prepared, and we've prepared very, very well. We have our social media team now, we have, we'll have a slide up there, but we'll, and I'll go over it in a few moments, but I'm going to encourage you to, if we don't have, we should, if you live in the Colby Fire burn area right now, we should have your name, your address, and your telephone number, and your emergency contacts, and if we don't, you need to tell us that, so that we can notify you. But there's going to be a chance that bad things are going to happen quick, and we will not be able to get to notify you, and it's up to you, it's incumbent upon you to be alert and to be aware of your surroundings. Use extreme caution in and out, because they tell us nothing has changed, and we're all around at the end of February, and we all saw the amount of water that flowed in the mud. If not, take a look at some of the pictures that we have around here. Stay informed, pay attention to GPD in the next three to five years, increase truck activity around the basins. Listen, folks, you guys live in Glendora, how many of you hate three-axle dump trucks now that are going up and down, show of hands, how many hate the three-axle dumps, right? And if they fit about 10 or 11 cubic yards in the back of those dumps, and what was said, you know, thousands of cubic yards that had to be removed, and they will continue to drive on our streets. My apologies, I've had lots of complaints, demands that we stop, and we can't stop, those trucks are going to continue. So protection of life and property is my job, and the job of this police department, and I am going to protect you. But we have to, we have to be in partnership with that, and when it's red, my officers are going to tell you, if you leave your home, we're not going to let you back, and we're going to be, we're going to be strict about that. We have plenty of personnel. Right now, we have our friends in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, San Dimas, I've got Deputy Scott Hurst in the back. We have a great working relationship with the County Sheriff's Department, and Scott and I have known each other for years, and when we have extended rains, we are going to, when I run out of personnel, I'll have plenty of personnel coming to Glendora from the Sheriff's Department and surrounding agencies. And again, we plan for the worst and hope for the best, so I have to plan for the worst. We have to listen to what these people are saying, nothing's changed in Glendora, rain comes down really fast, and we are really vulnerable right now. Communication is critical, we're invested in NICSIL 360, that's our reverse 911 system, so we will ring landlines in Glendora, and if our system doesn't work or goes down, we have redundancies, the LA County Sheriff's has a reverse 911 that we could use. Our Facebook, again, we have, we've spent, I've got a large team of social media people where I pay them to play on Facebook, I know, listen, but it is extremely important that we communicate, that's the best way we're going to get, we're going to survive this thing, is to communicate really well. Whether it's Facebook or Twitter, we have it on Channel 3, the Glendora Report, I've got one of those little radios, I bought two of them, one's sitting in Chris's office, one's in my office, little white radio, don't, I think it works, there's a little light that's on right there, but I'm just waiting for the flag to fly and that tone to go off, and then listen to LA, Los Angeles radio and TV and follow public safety directions. So I'm going to turn this over to my Captain Joe Ward, who has worked tirelessly on developing traffic plans, on making sure that when the rain comes, we don't overreact, but we will keep you safe. So, Joe Ward.
I think most people have a basic understanding of the color alerts, but I'm going to do a quick review of it. Right now, the city of Glendora is at green, and what that means is, we don't see any potential threat, we don't see any bad weather coming out there. Thus, we don't have any restrictions in the Colby Impact Area. But one thing to keep in mind is, if you live in the Colby Impact Area, you always have to be alert, because a perfect example of that is what happened on August 3rd in Mount Baldy, which is just a few miles east of us. That was a devastating storm, it just came out of the blue, there was no warning. One person was killed, and 30 homes were severely damaged, and that could have hit Glendora just as easily. So always be alert. Now the next one is yellow. What that means basically is, we see the potential of something, there's bad weather on the horizon, we don't know if it's going to hit Glendora or not, but we need to be ready. Now for you guys, the number-one difference between yellow and green is, we don't want you to put anything on the streets. We don't want cars on the streets, we don't want trashcans, we don't want anything there. And this is the reason why. Next slide. When things are on the street, they become weapons, they destroy things. Now, if you have a car in front of your house, it's probably not going to hurt you, but what could happen is, your car could wind up in somebody's living room down the road, so you don't want that to happen. And the other reason why it's critical to keep the streets clear is, all the public works vehicles, the fire trucks, they're very large, they need space, they can't go up there, they can't clear the streets, they can't have emergency access, if people are driving around, there's trashcans on the streets, there's vehicles, that's why we need the streets clear. Now the next one is condition orange, this is voluntary evacuations. Now, this is getting more serious. Essentially, we think that there's a serious chance that a storm's going to hit Glendora that's going to cause problems. And what you're going to see on orange is this, you're going to see a significant increase in the number of police officers patrolling the streets. You're going to see public works trucks driving around, checking the storing drains, looking at the gutters. You're going to see police officers, police cadets, dropping off traffic control devices at all the intersections to stage them, to get ready. And since we're telling you that you should evacuate if you want to, we're going to open up the evacuation center at the Crowther Teen and Family Center. Now the next one is red, mandatory evacuations. Basically, we think something is seriously going to hit Glendora, it's imminent, it's dangerous, based upon everything you heard today, you should leave. Now are police officers going to arrest somebody who doesn't leave, are we going to force you out of your house? No, we're not going to do that. It's your choice, but based upon all the information, you should leave. Now, a good thing to keep in mind though, is, even when we're telling you to evacuate, you can't jeopardize your own safety. If you see water flowing in front of your house, you can't cross that, and that's what we were talking about, shelter in place. Something's in front of your house, go into your house, go into the highest safe place inside of your house. Now this is the part that everybody... Now, this is the part that everybody hates, and we know you hate it, and we're sorry that we have to do it, but we really have no choice, is, once we go to red and we do mandatory evacuations, once you leave the impact zone, we're not going to let you back in. And right now, we're saying, we're sorry we have to do that. We know it's terribly inconvenient, and it's probably one of the worst things that could happen, but we just can't let you back in once we do it. But we are constantly trying to look at this, like, and the next slide is, what happened is after February, previously before, we closed off everything at Sierra Madre. But we're constantly looking at stuff, trying to change things to make it easier on you when we can. One of our options is to move it up to Palm Avenue instead of Sierra Madre. Now, that's not going to help everybody here, but it will help some people. So we're going to keep looking at that, and whatever we can do, we'll do the best, because we know it's terrible not to go back into your home. Okay? Thank you.
Again, I just want to help summarize this process one more time. And if we could all please recognize the tremendous cooperation that we have received from our federal partners, our county partners, because this is a true team effort, and I really have to express that in strong terms. This is not a City of Glendora effort by any means. This is a truly unified effort by many people that have been spending great deal of time about your safety and concern about the city of Glendora. Mark Jackson comes from Ventura and Oxnard. John is in charge of all the Angeles Forest area. So they have a lot of people making demands on them, yet they are spending extreme amount of time here helping us do that single mention that the chief talked about, protecting life and property. So if you would, please give them all a big hand for coming down today. The chief sort of talked about all the processes it takes for us to be successful. I always compare it to like a three-legged stool. And it's very simple. The stool can't work if one of those legs is missing or not doing its part to carry the weight of whoever sits on it. We have the public process that you've seen today, of us trying to be prepared, to put out there mitigation measures, from K rails to cleaning out basins, to having personnel on call to respond at a moment's notice, collaboration, and so forth. You've heard about the private side, what you, as residents, need to do to be prepared, to do the things on your property, to make sure that those devices and efforts that we've done out there on ourselves is fully functional, does its job, and protects the property of you and your loved ones. And how important that is to do that, how important it is for you to heed the advice that we're giving out at a process that can be coming very fast, or maybe over a few hours or days that we're giving out instructions or information, but heeding that. And then finally, and Mark sort of alluded to this, is luck. With every natural disaster, there's an element of luck involved. And he alluded to just how lucky we were that a number of those storm cells passed us by. We were watching on one of these great websites, the storms as they come up, and as you know, Monrovia had some pretty serious flooding and debris flows in their community, even Azusa. It was just amazing to see that storm cell, as it came and got closer and closer, all of a sudden, just shoot up and through the Azusa Canyon. For whatever reason, I have no idea. But had those storm cells continued to come by, we would have been the recipient of that same amount of intensity that hit those other communities. So there's always luck. So despite whatever effort we do or you do, there's that element that we just are going to hope for the best. And we will do our best, and then some, I can guarantee you, as we go through that.